Good morning, everyone. And welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for November the 30th. We need to excuse Council members Luna and Glover, who are out of town. But we will do our best without them. The first item on our agenda today is to review the agenda for the December 4th Council Meeting. So Council, please take a look at that document. First several items are liquor license applications, followed by purchase contracts, various resolutions, and ordinances. Anything on that agenda that you have questions about or would like to remove from the consent agenda? We'll take another look at this on Monday. Oh, do we have anyone joining us by a telephone this morning? Mr. Luna or Glover? Yeah, I think we were under the -- both of them had indicated they were not calling in, but maybe nothing's changed, it sounds like. Okay. All right. Again, any questions regarding our December 4th Council Meeting Agenda? Hearing none, the next item is to hear a presentation and discuss an update on the Housing Master Plan Phase 1. Glad to have our great Housing Director Liz Morales with us. Liz, looking forward to hearing this presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Very happy to be in front of you this morning to bring to you the first phase of our Housing Master Plan. When we had been discussing this the last year or so about the update, the last update of our Housing Master Plan was adopted by Council in July of 2004. So as you can see, we're overdue for an update. And so due to the size and scope of the project, we broke this up into two phases. And today, we're going to be discussing the first phase, which is really around data gathering and analysis, looking at past trends and future forecasting. And today, we're going to be looking at the data and the story it tells. I'm going to be introducing our consultants, who have provided us that context and some initial conclusions. It will provide us some great information and help us move forward into Phase 2, which will develop policy guidelines around housing development and to create a vision for the next 10 years. So I'd like to introduce our speakers. We have Dr. Sheila Harris. She has over 30 years in the housing industry and was the founding director of the Arizona Department of Housing and Arizona Housing Finance Authority. During her nearly six-year tenure with the Department of Housing, she oversaw the financing of more than $1.5 billion in housing and community economic development projects. Dr. Harris has her doctorate in public administration from the Arizona State University. And also, we have Rick Merritt. He is president and one of the founders of Elliott D. Pollack &amp; Company, a real estate and economic consulting firm. Mr. Merritt has more than 35 years' experience in the fields of real estate development and consulting, city planning, and project management in the Phoenix area. Mr. Merritt specializes in economic and fiscal impact analysis, real estate market and financial feasibility, and land use analysis. Mr. Merritt has a master's in business administration from Arizona State University and a bachelor's of community planning from University of Cincinnati. And he is a member of the American Planning Association. So I want to thank them both, that we've spent countless hours, and they have really provided us a quality plan here for us. So as I discussed the purpose, I also discussed what our Phase 1 was. There was a lot of data sources that our consultants utilized, and I'm going to turn it over to them to talk about the data.
Thank you, Liz. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. I just wanted to reiterate, we really enjoyed working with Liz and Emily and her group at the Housing Department. They've provided us great input into the study, and we've really had a great time with them in putting this plan together. I want to start out with just some demographic trends. I'll get into some housing trends, and then we'll talk about our conclusions and recommendations. In terms of population forecast, you can see what the long-term forecast is here, up to 613,000 people by 2050. We looked at the next 10 years, and in the next 10 years, Mesa should get close to about 550,000 people. So another 72,000 or so persons added to the population over the next 10 years. In terms of median income, there are some interesting things that we found here. And if you look back at the chart at the year 2000, you can see that at one point, Mesa's median income was above the statewide and the county average. And Mesa was coming off its big boom in growth in 1980s and 1990s. But beyond that, the growth started to slow a bit, and so did the median incomes. And you can see how we now track just slightly below the Arizona average, but well below the Maricopa County average, or median. In the last year, however, there's been an uptick. If you look at the between 2015 and 2016, there was a 6.5% increase in the median income. So we're starting to see incomes start to grow again in Mesa, and we're getting close now to the statewide average again. So we expect that to continue. In terms of poverty, the poverty level is the same for all 48 states. It's based on three times the cost of the minimum food diet. And that calculates into an income of $24,500 per year, and that's from 2015. A total of more than 81,000 Mesa residents are considered to live in poverty, 14,000 families. And it represents about 17% of the city's population. It is equal to about the county's average, but it is still nonetheless a factor that needs to be considered in the future. Another thing we took a look at was the low and moderate income persons in the city. The HUD definition, this is a HUD definition, really, low and moderate income. And you can see the low income, they're earning less than 50% of the area median income. For moderate income, they're earning between 50% and 80% of the median income. And most assistance programs and housing programs are targeted towards persons making less than 80% of the median income. In 2015, the median income for Greater Phoenix was 66,200. So you're looking at people that make less than 80% of that amount. The numbers are very close to the Maricopa County averages. You're not much different. Obviously Mesa and Phoenix are a large percentage of the population in the county, and they really form what these numbers are for the most part. But it is still, there are still some significant numbers there. 167,000 persons in Mesa are considered to be low and moderate income. One of the things we really think is important is the link between housing quality, affordability, and economic development. And Mesa has taken some significant measures to turn that, to improve its living situation for its residents. We found in our study that in terms of education, Mesa has lower levels of bachelor and graduate degrees than surrounding cities. And in employment, there's a lower percentage of its workers in occupations in management, business science, and the arts compared with neighboring cities. So what we really see is Mesa's made some significant efforts in trying to improve the well-being of its citizens through education. I can tell you that we've studied this for other cities in the Valley, who have tried to recruit universities to their communities. And Mesa is the one who has done the job. The others, you can look Goodyear, you can look at Peoria, you can look at Gilbert, they've all run into problems with attracting universities to their communities. Mesa's the one that has not. And it's probably because you had facilities in town here that you readapted and used, and you've made some good efforts in getting the universities here. The same in employment, attracting companies like Apple and Dexcom to Mesa, and retaining Boeing and MD Helicopter. So making great efforts in trying to improve the housing situation here in Mesa. In terms of housing conditions and trends, once again, based on the population forecast that you saw previously, there will be a need for another 72,000, excuse me, another 27,000 new housing units over the next 10 years to house the 72,000 people that are expected to show up here. So about a 13% increase in your housing stock should occur over the next 10 years. In terms of housing, this is ownership, housing permit activity, this is townhomes, condos, primarily single-family, but it's all three of those types of units. And you can see Mesa was not real active in its permitting activity through 2011, but since then, it's really ticked up. And in 2016, Mesa and the city of Phoenix have basically matched the number of permits that they've issued in the cities, around roughly 2,100 permits each of those cities. So Mesa is the leader in permitting activity right now. Northeast Mesa, particularly Eastmark area, are areas that are leading the permitting activity for the city right now. In terms of housing conditions and trends, the average price of new and resale single-family homes in Mesa is still very affordable and less expensive in Chandler and Gilbert. A new home in Mesa is about averages $336,000 today. The median price of a newly-built, single-family home is about $100,000 higher, or excuse me, a new, single-family home is higher than the typical resale home. So about $229,000, $230,000 is what we were seeing in 2016 for a resale home. And that's equal to what's going on in the city of Phoenix. And one of the things we found is that Mesa has the lowest percentage of homeowners with a mortgage among Southeast Valley cities. 72% of Phoenix homeowners have a mortgage. Chandler, it's 80%. Gilbert, it's 88%. So there's a lot of stability here of people who don't have mortgages, don't have to move if they don't want to. The rising cost of housing could cause a lot of people to stay in their homes and renovate instead of move. There may be some difficulty in obtaining loans today. You need a lot of down payments, it's more difficult credit-wise to get loans. So that may be keeping people in homes as well. But there is a lot of stability here in the homeownership market. The city's housing market is affordable to middle-income households and essential personnel such as teachers, policemen, firemen. You have a real good mix, a balanced mix of workforce and executive housing opportunities. The new home market at the median price I mentioned of 336,000 is attractive to executives and professionals, and you're seeing that activity starting to occur in the Eastmark area and in northeast parts of Mesa. Mesa's multifamily housing inventory stands at about 49,000 units, or 41.6% of all occupied units. And the renter-occupied housing inventory is a little higher than neighboring cities. If you can go to the next chart, we'll show you where you stand. You're slightly above the Greater Phoenix average for rental, renter-occupied units, but well below what is occurring in Phoenix. Tempe is a little different because of the student population, but pretty average across the board for the percentage of renters in the city of Mesa. One of the things we've really been tracking as a result of the housing boom and bust and the housing crisis that occurred is the percent of single-family homes that are rented. And you can see, if you go back historically, somewhere around 9% or 10% of all single-family homes before the housing boom were rented. And you can see where we stand today at about 21%. And that, you're not typical than any other city in the Valley. That is historically what is happening across the Valley today. 20, 21, 22% single-family homes are rented. We believe that over time, as these investment groups that purchase these large pools of homes see prices rise, they will eventually sell them off, and we'll start to see people buy those homes back again, and this percentage will drop. But it is going to take some time to see that happen. It's something to keep an eye on. It does, we create, create some instability in the market, but it's something we think will change over time. And corresponding to that is the percentage of homeownership. If you go back in history, long history, the average before the housing boom in the United States, about 64, 65% of all homes, of all units were owned by individuals. In 2000, in the United States, it was about 66%, which is equal to what Mesa is, or was in 2000. In Arizona, it was overall, it's a little bit higher, it's 68%. And you can see, getting into 2006, 2008, those numbers bumped up as mortgage money became very available, and then the housing bust started, and you can see where we end up today. In 2016, the U.S. average for homeownership is 63%. In Greater Phoenix, it's about 62%. We're at 59. So the problem is, Arizona, along with a couple of other states, got hit very hard with the housing bust. We're hit much more, much more harder than other areas. And as a result, it's going to take us a little bit longer to return to the long-term average. The U.S. is almost there, at 63%. We can expect, historically, they should get to about 64, 65% as the country. It'll take us a little bit longer to get there, but we believe it's coming once again as those single-family homes that are owned by the investment groups start to sell off their units, and homeownership becomes available to people to buy those homes. In terms of monthly rent, we've really taken a look at this, and there is a lot of concern throughout the market as to what is happening in the apartment market. In 2005, 2015, excuse me, rents in Mesa increased by 6.6%. In 2016, by 8.5%. If you look from 2010 to 2016, there was an overall increase of 21% increase in rent. Incomes only went up 12%. So you're seeing some disparity there, and it's really starting to, it could potentially start to really hit the low and moderate income, the people who are most vulnerable in trying to find a decent place to live. In terms of vacancy rates, one of the reasons why we're seeing an increase in the rents is because vacancy rates are so low. And as of the first part of 2017, Mesa had the lowest apartment vacancy rate of any major city around here. So that's why you're seeing rents start to jump quite a bit. It's just a shortage of available inventory, and rents are increasing. And then, once again, that's putting the problem, creating the problem for the most vulnerable households. We took a look at mobile homes. We know there've been questions about the quality and number of mobile home parks in the past, and you have a very large inventory, which accounts for 10% of the total housing stock. You also count for 21% of all mobile homes in the county. So it is a big number. Two-thirds of the residents of mobile homes are older than the age of 65, so it is a place of affordable housing for retired people. And the biggest issue is that 35% of all mobile homes in the city are more than 38 years old. 1976 was when the HUD construction standards came out and established requirements for the construction of mobile homes, manufactured housing. Prior to that, there were no particular standards. So you're seeing an aging housing stock that could potentially have some safety issues, some health issues, and it may be something to take a look at further as you proceed on with your housing study. In terms of housing cost burden, HUD defines the cost of, cost burden as a household paying more than 30% of income towards housing. And you can see that we compared 2005 and 2015. For owner-occupied units, the percentage went down some. That's probably because of there's fewer homeowners, people that left their homes due to foreclosure, short sale. And the opposite occurred for renter-occupied units, it went up. So virtually half of all renter occupants are considered to be cost burden in Mesa. Once again, this is not an untypical number. We see this across the Valley, basically. So in terms of our considerations for housing conditions and trends, we believe that you should continue to promote a mix of all housing and income levels. Townhomes and condos for first-time buyers, affordable units for low and moderate income persons, and that's really where the greatest demand lies today. Market-rate apartments for those planning for future home purchase, and executive housing for professionals and upwardly mobile households. And all that seems to be happening today in Mesa. Although the affordable units are clearly where the greatest demand lies and where the greatest shortage is today. And in order to better understand the quality conditions and inventory types of mobile home parks, we believe the city should consider conducting an additional survey to provide more comprehensive data and insights that will be helpful in future decision-making. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sheila, who will talk about affordable housing activities and production.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Liz. It was important to look at all aspects of the housing stock, and that's why we're going to be doing a specific section on affordability. As was just indicated by Rick, it is the area that has the greatest need in the Mesa community. We also wanted to look at how the federal funds that have come to the city of Mesa have been used and how they've been leveraged. So that was also part of what we did in the analysis. We primarily focused on the activities of the past 10 years, because you're looking to do a housing study for the next 10 years. So we thought it would be appropriate to give you the same sort of time, so you could use that in your future study. We have a map here that shows you where affordable housing complexes in Mesa are located. This is primarily information from the past 10 years. You can see that there's quite a bit of activity throughout the city. Some of it has been concentrated, most recently, in the west side of Mesa. And that has to do with some of the criteria that has been in the Qualified Allocation Plan that is put out by the state and how you use tax credits. It is important to note that it is a point-driven system, and developers will go where they can get the most points. This year, in the draft, that amount of points for being located adjacent to the light rail has been greatly diminished. It's gone from, I believe, 35 points to 15. So I think you may be seeing less incentive by developers coming to your community and wanting to locate along the light rail. It doesn't help them as much as it has in the past with their scoring criteria. One thing that sometimes gets missed when you're looking at affordable housing is what is the benefit of those leveraged funds that have come into the community? And we looked and looked at private and public investments that came with those, not only tax credits, but other sources of federal funds. And that was over $307 million. So in addition to the fixed asset that you get with the development of affordable housing that is a tax credit or bond program, you also get additional infusion into the community through the construction and other associated costs with that. I do want to point out, too, that the, another reason that I think you might see less activity along the light rail for tax credit properties is, not only is the system point-driven, but it's extremely competitive. There are probably three to four times the number of applications that are submitted every year. So that also is part of the reason and part of the incentive that developers go and try and find the most points when they're developing affordable housing. In addition to the tax credit program, there are some other programs that the city of Mesa has administered, one of which you may be familiar with, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This was a short-lived program that was really put together in the Obama administration as a result of the downturn in the economy and trying to stimulate homeownership and affordable housing throughout the country. And it also was another incentive, I believe, in all the activity that you saw with the tax credits. Many of those units in West Mesa occurred during the downturn. And quite frankly, in all the cities across Arizona, the major source of apartment development was the tax credit program, because other sources in the private market just weren't available to do that. There was over $2 million in NSP funds that have been spent, and that was used in both acquiring and renovating 62 single-family homes and 37 units of rental housing. That was one of the benefits of NSP, was it could be used for both homeownership, it could be also used for rental, and even for helping to stabilize neighborhoods. Home funds have been used as gap financing for seven of your low-income housing tax credit projects. And that has assisted almost 790 families with also rental assistance, and I need to clarify that. Home money can be used both for constructing units, but it can also be used as rental assistance. And that's one of the benefits of the home program, and you've used both of those programs quite extensively. Additionally, maybe you've also become familiar with the Community Development Block Rent Funds, or CDBG. These can be used for a variety of activities in low and moderate income areas as designated by HUD. The city has directed nearly $13 million for repairing owner-occupied homes. That speaks to what Rick was talking about earlier, about helping people stay in their homes, because they may not be able to move up, there may not be a market or a housing product that is out there for people to move into. But you can sustain or extend the life of a home by doing renovations to it. Additionally, funds for CDBG have been used to help people with disabilities. And you've had quite an extensive program in helping people adapt their homes, their bathrooms, their walkways, their entrances to their homes, so they can remain in their home. The Housing Choice Voucher Program, or Section 8, as it's sometimes referred to, has helped over 1,700 individuals and families. Additionally, that brings in revenue to private landlords with whom people rent their homes from. And that's accumulated to about $10 million a year going to private landlords. Populations that benefit from this are veterans, low-income individuals, and families, as well as persons with disabilities. One of the things that we, on a looking-forward basis for the Housing Master Plan, is a balance of product. And while there is a great need in affordable housing, which is my love, we also recognize that there are other types of housing units that do need to be developed. And I do believe that 167,000 number that was quoted earlier is a very significant number, and one that you should bear in mind as you're trying to go forward and develop a master plan. I don't know if you have anything else you want to add to that?
No, I think that's...
So as Rick has stated, rents are rising faster than incomes, and this makes it much more difficult when you have a low income. The HUD standard is you should spend no more than about 30% of your income for rent. And that leaves you 70% for everything else. And that sometimes is very difficult, particularly when you have such a low vacancy rate here at 5%. You're finding it's a lot of pressure for rents to increase, because owners of those apartment complexes can get a larger return on their investment. One of the challenges that Mesa is facing, as other communities in the Valley that have VASH vouchers, those are Section 8-like vouchers that are specifically for veterans, is it's very difficult to get those vouchers placed. Even though someone is income-eligible, meets all the criteria, there just is a vast shortage of units. And we're talking studio-in-one-bedroom-type apartments, oftentimes, because many of the veterans that are eligible for that are single individuals. As Rick indicated, homeownership rates have also fallen, and activities to help promote homeownership are needed, as well as a development of product. Because if you're that low-income buyer, even that $336,000 price tag that is competitive with your neighbors is impossible for people is impossible for people who are low and moderate income.
Yeah, and I would add that, and you've probably heard or read from home building companies, that it's becoming more and more difficult because of land prices, labor, material prices to build an affordable, single family home. So there needs to be alternatives. The new single family home market just keeps rising in price. And that is going to continue to be an issue into the future. Some of the other considerations, once again, we talked about, monitor the single family rental market for signs of improvement. And once again, that's a neighborhood stability issue that we think needs to really be... The city really needs to keep an eye on. And then, once again, 35% of the mobile homes in the city are more than 38 years old. And really need more data and strategies on how to either rehab these units or replace them in the future. Because it's going to become... It's going to continue to be an issue as these units age.
I would encourage you to continue to provide input to the Arizona Department of Housing regarding the Qualified Allocation Plan. This plan changes every year, just like any document that you have that has to do with federal funding. And they only adapt to people who make their voices heard. And so the louder your voice, sometimes the more it is heard. My only other recommendation would be that looking at the home funds that you have used to help leverage the tax credit program in the community, the length of time, the period of affordability that you're using those funds, to make that coincide with the tax credit program. Right now, yours is a few years less. All this does is just continue so all of those units remain affordable for a slightly longer period of time.
So thank you both, Sheila and Rick, for that valuable information. Mayor and council, we are looking to move into Phase Two, which would be to seek public input through a variety of opportunities, through surveying, interviewing stakeholders, and using our technology to get that input. We recognize there's a lot of people that have this knowledge that we need to help develop policy recommendations. Our neighborhood leaders in all our districts, business leaders, industry experts in the multi housing, real estate and manufactured housing industries. Also, we have our Housing and Community Development Advisory Board, who have been very helpful to staff on looking at different areas. And we want to utilize them in this next phase. Also, our city departments, we want to include them as well as they provide a lot of expertise. We hope to come back to council, no later than the fall of 2018, to provide you the feedback and some initial policy recommendations for you to consider. At this point, we are... That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. We've been looking forward to this. I guess you need to redo a housing plan every 15 years or so, whether you need to or not, right? So I think you're right, this is overdue, so very needed and a lot of great work. Thank you very much. Council questions regarding the presentation? Yes?
I have a few. And I don't want to come across as callous at all, but I probably will end up coming across that way. So the mayor has been talking about recently with our education push about how our city is poor. And how we're below the... Our income levels in the city are below everyone else around us. How we're below the county. How do we not exasperate that by bringing in more affordable housing? You know, and especially when you see the rental go up while the homeownership goes down. Because I know one of the things that this council and the previous councils, excuse me, have really pushed for was homeownership. Because then people really become ingrained in their community and take pride in their community. Not to say the renters don't, but they typically, if you own your home, you're taking care of your home. And so how do we not exasperate the problem of becoming a poorer city if we continue to promote affordable housing and bringing in, you know, that type of housing into our community?
I think I know, but do you want to answer?
Go ahead and I'll follow.
Yeah, please tag to me. I think one of the important points to talk about when we develop or provide affordable housing is that you are now allowing those residents to have more discretionary income, to be able to do the things like pay for childcare so they can get their employment, to be able to pay for more quality education, resources. It frees up their money so that they're not over cost burden, as Rick was talking about. So, you know, we have existing residents that are currently paying more. And often, it's not allowing them to do some of those things that would help them move up economically.
Right, but building more housing is not helping the people that are already in poverty. It's bringing more people into the city that are below poverty.
I don't know that that's necessarily true. I mean, you have a significant population of people that are low income here already, which probably means they're living in substandard housing. And that is not good for your city either. So I think it's a direction and a challenge to the city to figure out how to make that happen. But I also think there is somewhat of an obligation by the cities, not just your city, but every city, to address the people that are here. And how do we provide for the people that are here? Because they do provide jobs, you know, they do work.
And I guess that's my point, is how do we provide for the people that are here now without inviting more into our community? So that our community rises, you know, with the tide versus, you know, up and down all over the place.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, I think some of the things that we've done is that, for instance, on our Section 8 program and a lot of our programs, we give preferences to those who are City Mesa residents so that we're serving them first and foremost. And so those are ways that we can ensure that we're serving our Mesa residents primarily. So I think your point is that we need to continue to do some of those things so that we are first serving those who are living here. And I understand your concern there.
And then on the rental, and this might be something for Mr. Butler, if you could. Every year, the legislature, there's one of the legislators that always pushes for rental, to eliminate the rental tax. Do you see that coming back again?
Mayor, Councilmember, thanks for a little morning PTSD for all the fights that we have on the residential rental tax over the last several years. You know, we have formed a really good relationship with our Public Safety community, who's been very helpful in educating legislators about just the need for... We... It's a demonstrated fact that, for a multitude of reasons, that multifamily has more calls for service and more demands on city services than single family residential. And so obviously, the tax offsets some of those higher costs that are associated with providing services. And we've been very fair, working with multifamily, looking at trash services and other things over the years that, you know, allow for a good working relationship that I think we have as a city and really as a region with multifamily. I'm hopeful that they want to bring that bill back this coming session. We haven't heard that they will. I think last year, they did take a reprieve, and we hope that that will continue this year. But that's where just education of legislators have really paid off and just shown that this is an effective use and tool for expenditures of taxpayer dollars and putting that back in through Public Safety and other community services back into the multifamily residents.
Do you remember, off the top of your head, what that loss to the city would have been on the rental tax piece?
You know, I'll maybe look to Kansas to help me, but I want to say in the $8 to $10 million range. Yeah, I believe, $8 to $10 million, Councilmember. I can verify that and get that back to you.
So if we continue to push for more apartments or the lower income apartment type facilities, if they were successful in running that bill, it could be a pretty big detriment to our general fund?
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, I'm about to get out of my depth in answering this. But I will say, though, that when we did our analysis, it... There was no... There was commonality amongst all multifamily residents for that higher demand on service. And so it wasn't... You know, you could call out certain apartment brands that may be viewed as more high end that still had the same demands on city services as those that maybe are more in the affordable housing range. And so it's just as a section of the housing stock, there's just a higher demand for services based on our analysis.
A question. Jeremy?
What are we doing to enforce the rental tax from the city perspective to make sure that landlords are actually paying that rental tax?
Now, that is definitely... I don't know if that...
It's the state now.
Yeah, it's right, yeah. State Department of Revenue actually collects the tax. Now, as far as what kind of auditing or checks we do, Mayor, Councilmember, I can definitely, you know, work with our tax and auditing folks to get an answer for that.
We're limited by how we can do audits now. We can't... We have to do it across the whole valley unless they're only in Mesa. So it's our... That whole effort of our oversight over the collection of sales tax, the payment of sales tax has dramatically been decreased in the last, what, two years, three years since the state mandated that they take over that responsibility?
So my understanding is if you own one rental property, you don't pay rental sales tax in Mesa. But if you own more than one, you do pay rental taxes. Is that a city... Or something like this, right? Is it a city policy or is that at the state level?
Mayor, Councilmember, that is a city policy.
So if that's our city policy, then do we even have a way of enforcing it at the city? Or are you saying now that the state collects the revenue, we don't even have the ability to figure that out?
Mayor, Councilmember, if it's... If you're maybe a private individual that owns a rental home or you own a duplex or a fourplex and would be subject to the rental tax, that is something we are still able to audit and enforce. If you only own those complexes within the city of Mesa, if you're a Mark Taylor Communities and you own residential units all across the valley, that is something then that would fall under state purview. And we would rely on the Department of Revenue to enforce that.
But your question, yes, it's more difficult now than it was. Absolutely.
But we can work with our internal auditing to determine if there are, in fact, cases where rental sales taxes isn't being paid.
If it's only in the city.
Sure. But is that being done today, is my question?
Oh, yeah. We're all over all of those, even the retail sales taxes. I mean, they don't look just at the multifamily. They look at all categories of sales tax collections.
Okay. And Mayor, Councilmember, there's also the ability that if there's certain areas where we can demonstrate to the state that we believe their auditing and enforcement hasn't stayed up to the demand that's out there, we're able to work with them and enter into agreements where some of our city auditors could potentially take on some of those functions with the state. That would have to be a cooperative effort with the state, though, with their permission. But I think what we've seen, to your point about Mesa only based businesses like this, that the larger multifamily industries have not necessarily, as a whole, been... They've been pretty compliant with state law as far as paying the rental tax. They, you know, they have a system set up. It's easy if you're a... I keep calling out their name just because they're prominent, Mark Taylor Communities, because you're used to paying taxes in Chandler and Mesa and Gilbert. And it's just a matter of business. It's probably, I believe, the smaller business owner who maybe owns a few units and rents that out, that we probably see a higher rate of lack of payment if that were to occur.
Great, thanks, Scott. The other question I have, Grinny, Sheila, thank you guys for coming on today. Appreciate your opinion.
I do have a couple of questions for you in regards to the homeownership in Mesa. And I know that you had some charts in there. I don't know if it's specifically addressed. Do you see a large deviation from like the national mean as far as homeownership goes in Mesa versus other, you know, urban areas in the country?
Well, today, there is. And once again, it's really because Arizona took a bigger hit than a lot of other states. And there was a lot more foreclosures, a lot more short sales. So there's a lot more loss of homeownership going on. So we are right, as I noted in the presentation, in 2000, before the housing boom, homeownership in Arizona and Mesa was above the countrywide average. Today, we're well below that. But it's trying to work our way back into the market after taking the housing hits that we took.
And from our municipal perspective, are there specific steps that you could recommend that we could be doing or setting as priorities from a council perspective in order to change that ratio? Or are we sort of at just the will of averages from the city?
I think somewhat we're at the will of averages. But there may be ways, and that's, I think, part of the next study, is how you address the homeownership issue. We've basically pointed it out. And we think it's something that really is important for neighborhood stability. But how we go about doing that is something, I think, in the next steps.
But isn't it also, you noted, though, that the city of Mesa is probably leading the state in single family home permits right now?
Correct.
So we're... I mean, I think we've created the environment for new homeowners... New constructed home ownership? Maybe we need to work on is that transition from the existing inventory to homeownership. But as far as developing new inventory for a single family home ownership, I mean, we're leading the valley easily.
Yes. Now, I would add, perhaps you want to take a look at, because single family housing is becoming so expensive, is to look at higher density housing products, ownership products, condos, townhomes, excuse me. And in particular, those types of products would really help your downtown to revitalize. And that's really where, you know, you could look at the Fiesta Mall area. Those are areas that really could use an influx of new housing. For the millennials that are, you know, have student debt, they are afraid of buying homes and things like that. Those are real areas, I think, to take a look at.
I would just add to that that the millennials are a new way of looking at homeownership. And increasingly, every study that comes out is they're less and less interested in becoming a homeowner because they've lived through it in maybe their parents' basement when they couldn't afford to live on their own. And, you know, now we're also seeing a lot of people who own their homes downsizing and coming into town. And if you have a product that, you know, someone who is newly retired could still... Who's still very, you know, active could, you know, walk to get coffee or to church or whatever, you know, social activity they want to do. That's another way to stimulate that homeownership.
And what are your thoughts on increasing the rental sales tax drastically in order to try to shift that ownership? Or what impact do you think that would have on our community if we did that?
Increasing the rental...
The rental sales tax? So that landlords that would come to Mesa to buy homes as investments would stay away and, you know, drive... If there's going to be more products, then the price, supply and demand, the prices should fall, right? If we have less people investing, from an investment perspective, in the city.
Well, it's my understanding that the rental sales tax probably falls on the person who's renting the unit. So in effect, if you raise the sales tax, you may be raising rents even more.
On a small scale, right? But on a larger scale, at some point, people will start to leave, I have to assume, that rental market, right? Even if the burden is pushed onto them, they would have to shift to other cities or something.
It would... From my perspective, it would have to be a pretty big change in the tax to make it... I mean, the cities all around have different sales tax rates. And you'd have to take a look at, if you raise the tax, what that really means in terms of how competitive you are with other communities. You are today the lowest of the cities in rent, you're pretty equal to Phoenix. So people are still going to come here because the rents are more affordable to begin with. So it's kind of a double edged sword you're trying to deal with, I guess.
I do have a few questions as well. Mr. Thompson, you have another?
Liz, we can shift a greater amount of the HUD funding over to push for the first time home buyer to really make that effort, consorted effort, to push homeownership, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson...
Versus pushing it towards the affordable, like apartments and rentals?
Right. As you decide on the funding recommendations, there's that opportunity. We have been doing a significant amount of funding towards homeownership activities with down payment assistance and also purchasing and renovating for homeownership. So we are currently doing it. We can increase that based on your direction.
So as I understand it, this completes Phase One. We now embark on Phase Two. And as I look at the slide that kind of summarizes what we've done and what you'd like to do... going forward, I'm looking at slide number 30 and specifically. You mentioned that there's four bullet points. Homeownership rates have fallen, efforts needed to promote homeownership. I was going to ask the question that Mr. Whitaker asked a moment ago, what are those efforts? What should we be doing to increase homeownership? And it sounds like that's going to be incorporated into the next phase of this report. Is that correct? Or is that something separate?
Mayor, that will be part of the questions that we begin to ask is, you know, besides our current efforts, what are other efforts we can do to increase homeownership? And how can we better market our programs that we have to—to help people understand that you can start entering the market again and that there are products out there that—whether it be low, moderate, and, you know, people at the median income or higher can enter back into the market, that there are products out there to help them with that.
Okay, so we don't need to provide you with any additional encouragement to answer these questions of what efforts we can do to encourage more homeownership? That's part of phase two, is that correct?
Mayor, yes, that's correct. We will ask those questions and bring you back some recommendations of what we're finding—hearing about how to better improve that area.
And then the last bullet on this slide talks about the aging and large stock we have of mobile homes. And some of the numbers I heard during the presentation is that Mesa has 21% of the county's stock of mobile homes, 35% of our mobile homes are over 38 years old, which puts us back into the time when there were no standards relative to manufactured housing. And so a lot of that—we talk about the problem of substandard housing in our community. I would guess that that's linked closely to our large stock of aging mobile home communities. Over the last few years, we have been, I think, trying to learn a lesson from our experience with the Mesa Royale experience, where we have a large, substandard housing community that kind of deteriorated, to some extent unbeknownst to us, because we don't have the ability to be proactive in going out and doing housing inspections. We only respond to complaints, and—and so we just don't know of what the what the quality of a lot of the housing in our community is. And it seems like that's only going to get worse, given the statistics you just shared with us. So my understanding of your recommendation is that you would like to study this more, you think we need more data to come back to council with maybe some recommendations on this topic. Can you discuss that a little bit more, please?
Well, there's a limited amount of information that we can generate from the U.S. Census. The data you saw came—from the most part came from the census. So we don't know—we think there are a couple of different kinds of mobile home parks, one which is the winter visitor, and then there's more of the permanent resident ones. And those are probably the problem areas more than the other. But we just—there's just not enough information on the inventory that's out there, taking a look at the condition throughout the city, the age, perhaps, of the residents of those communities, those types of things. So we just need more information to come to a conclusion on what to do with the inventory.
My impression is that this is a problem we need to address, that we would be negligent if we—now that we're aware of these figures, if we turned a blind eye to it. So I would—I would encourage city staff—I'm in favor of dedicating some resources to learning more about this situation and possibly what we can do to address it. I just have this feeling that there are many more Mesa Royales that are either out there or on the verge of being out there, and it's better for us to know that and maybe be a little more proactive than than we have been in the past on those—on that topic. So do you need—what would you—what can we do to learn more and perhaps develop a strategy about this situation?
Mayor, I will recommend that as we do our public feedback, as we interview those stakeholders in that industry, is to get some of those recommendations or suggestions of how to proceed with that. We can offer some ideas based on what we know, whether it be surveying and or trying to classify parks as far as their level of conditions and qualities, but those are things we're going to put out there as possible ways of addressing it and then get more information because there may be strategies that we haven't considered.
Okay.
We're but we are limited, as you said about inspection, so our ability to go in and without a complaint, to go in and do a code inspection or something like that would be very limited.
And is that because of resources?
No, it's because of state law and the city's own adopted ordinance.
Okay, so it's illegal for us to send without a complaint?
Inside, yeah. Inside. We could do the utilities and things like that, but as far as whether they have fire sprinklers or the conditions of the code.
Sure.
You know, a lot of the issues we've seen before have had to do with electrical service on the outside and storage and plumbing.
Yeah. But what I could envision is that we identify—what are some of the—the big indicators of potential safety issues and substandard housing issues having to do with, you know, for example, I've heard stories of propane tanks attached to garden hoses and and just obvious non—you know, health and safety violations that are obvious just by touring the park and also just the occupancy level, you know, where literally fire trucks cannot negotiate the streets of some of these communities. So I—yeah, I'm not suggesting that we knock on people's doors and go in and inspect their homes without some provocation, but it does seem like, given what we've learned, that we can't turn a blind eye to situations that are percolating in our community and just unfortunately wait for something horrible to happen before we address them. Mr. Thompson?
I just want to make sure that we're—that we're not putting staff into a predicament of all of a sudden becoming the policing force on private property rights, especially when you get into mobile homes. You know, be careful what you ask for because it can come back and bite you. If—you know, Mesa Royale is a perfect example of how much energy and time and effort the city and the city attorney's office and the nonprofits and everybody else had to get involved to resolve a problem that the property owner should have taken care of. And I want to make sure that we're not getting into that realm of all of a sudden it's on us to try to resolve somebody else's problem.
I guess that's my point. When you—when you don't know about a problem, all of a sudden it's a big problem, and the city is then in this awkward position of we were actually evicting people from a mobile home park because over the course of decades, we'd not done anything about it. But if we are on top of it and we can prevent it from getting to that level, then we don't have to get involved and be the big bad government.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're using caution and not overstepping our bounds as a city on private property rights, though, as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I—excuse me.
Yes, sir. And then we'll hear from Mr. Heredia, I think.
I think there's a lot of information out there that you wouldn't need—you could do a lot of research at a high level. The Maricopa County Assessor's records has the age of every unit that's been built in the county. So you can—you can take a look at some of that research and do some research like that and begin to at least get a high-level feel for where your problem areas may be based on the age of parks to begin with. And you can take a look from aerial photography. There's a lot of research you can do that I think would give you some idea of where some problem areas may be. And it doesn't mean you have to even enter the park or, you know, look at individual units, but just to get an overall look of the numbers, where they're located, how old they are, those types of high-level numbers.
I suspect people in the mobile home community can tell us what the expected life is of a particular home. And if we've had 35% of them are over 38 years of age, they might be able to say, well, yeah, about 40 years or whatever it is, 50 years, these—unless they undergo renovations, will no longer be habitable, or they will be below—I don't know. I'm interested to get educated on that. Mr. Heredia?
Yeah, I think my comment was, is there any research that we can do in being proactive in looking and maybe mapping these areas across the city? Or also what other cities have done to look at this issue, to inform us better as we move forward in the mobile home area? That's—that was—the same line as you were saying, Mayor, I think, is important to look at in seeing what are our options there to look at before it becomes a bigger problem. So that—I would—I would say that looking at other cities, what they've done in the valley or across Arizona or the region. And then my second question would be on your last slide or the second-to-last slide, you said, meeting with stakeholders. What is the current discussions or plans to inform other plans that are happening across different departments? Because this is great data, information that could help. I see you're meeting with public safety and economic development. What are some of those conversations? Or how can we utilize this data to build a comprehensive strategy on bringing—as we bring more businesses in? Have that informed with the housing information and other types of data to utilize on that planning piece as we move forward these next 10 years, so.
Mayor and Councilmember Heredia, I will tell you that the—there was a statewide organization that in the last—I believe it was in 2016, held several meetings around manufactured housing, and they came up with some recommendations out of that—that plan. I would like to build upon that, continue to utilize that group to help us provide some some direction because those were included various cities and organizations related to manufactured housing. So that—that is the direction we will go in in phase two is to continue to talk to them and include them. The second question, as we do our phase two and we talk to other departments, it will be with that aim to say, how can we work together? What are some things on how we can—we do a lot of interdepartmental work now. How can we strengthen that? How can we use this data? And then we could bring back those ideas that we talk about to you to say, this is how we think we can really work more closely to utilize this information.
And then, Mayor, I think we also need to make sure we understand—I mean, from the city staff perspective today, and I think we articulated it, we are—we're not just sitting around as far as housing and what's happening in housing. We just—last week, last Monday, whenever approved a significant development agreement for housing in downtown. We're—as you know, we're underway with continued negotiations for additional housing units in downtown in two different locations. You know, Eastmark didn't just happen. It took a significant effort over a year and a half. Well, I don't know how long it took, John, for us to develop the master plan and all the standards that are developed out there. So I think what we're talking about is refining what we're doing. The mobile home is a dilemma because it's very difficult to imagine, even after you—it needs to be addressed, but it's kind of like, what do you do with it after it reaches a certain age? It's—it's really not a rehab project, but is—and it's hard to take these sites and convert them into standalone, stick whatever the difference is. But that's probably something we need to look at, especially in our redevelopment areas that council's approving where we can make that distinction, is how to change maybe the entitlements and the—and how to maybe create an incentive for those owners of those mobile home parks to maybe look towards the future as maybe their property may become more valuable for something—a more permanent structure. So we got to figure out how to do that, but that may require some flexibility on our zoning and how we allow for those to be laid out because the sites will be very different than a typical, you know, lot that we would look towards. But those are maybe some things we can come back with. Thank you. And Mr. Freeman, you have a comment?
Well, just to comment on what Chris just said, I don't—there are—I know individuals who—investors that are heavily invested in mobile home parks and with the idea that they're going to be redeveloped at some point, that there's a lifespan for this housing product, and it—at some point, it will be over. And so I don't pretend to know the answer to this problem. I do know that Mesa is—we are heavy in mobile home parks, as was indicated, over, you know, one out of five mobile homes in the county is in Mesa. And so this is—we have to embrace the fact that this is who we are, and—and we need to at least be aware of what our situation is and be talking to those investors and be talking to the industry and have some sort of plan for what is going to happen over the next few decades as these, you know, sometimes 30, 40, 50-acre communities come to the end of their life. What—how are we going to redevelop that property? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to add and make sure that you understand that the people that would be displaced, where are they going to go? Because there are some resources available from the state when you—your mobile home is—park is absorbed for a different use. It's not nearly adequate for finding someplace else. They will move it, but some of these structures are not going to be able to be moved. So that brings another level of complexity to the issue.
Absolutely. As we've seen in the Mesa Royale situation, a lot of individual stories in that larger story. And also to Mr. Brady's point, though, I would like to compliment staff. The statistics that we saw, you can see the Mesa's trending in a good direction in terms of homeownership, in terms of the direction we want to go for—for the education levels and the prosperity of our community. So this is—we are not flat-footed on this issue. The trend is starting to go in a good direction for us, and so I wouldn't trade places with other communities. I like where we're at, where we're headed in a good direction. But that's not to—to say that there's still, I think, a lot of strategic planning that we couldn't—that we should be doing specifically with regard to the mobile home issue. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Liz, Mr. Merritt, Ms. Harris, thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate it. On page 26, I looked at the graph of the affordable housing complexes in West Mason. You brought it up, about West Mason, the impact it has. And this provided additional stresses to city staff and social services as well as public safety. And then going to number 32, I just applaud you for—I think it's 32—for reaching out to—in your survey and input and reaching out to the different organizations because there's a lot of neighborhood input that can help expedite some of the things that as stakeholders, you know, they have an important say into the matter, and I appreciate you reaching out to all of them. It'd be nice that affordable housing was spread out throughout the city so it was not so concentrated in one certain area, and I'm sure you would agree with that, but that's just how it is right now. So again, I appreciate those inputs from and opportunities from stakeholders and other organizations. But again, thank you for your presentation, that's all I have.
Yes, Mr. Heredia?
I forgot. Did you say, Ms. Harris, the NSP funding is no longer available? Or is there any other types of that funding available?
Mayor, Councilman Heredia, unfortunately, NSP has concluded there may be a small amount of program income that comes from the complexities of administering that program, that staff has the ability to administer for similar activities. But unfortunately, you know, Congress is looking to cut most of HUD's funding, so resources, I think, from the federal government are actually much more limited on a going-forward basis.
I forgot. One more issue that I traditionally raise when we have this conversation—I know we've initiated efforts for a strategic plan for homelessness, and Liz, just remind us where we are on that issue.
Yes. Mayor, we are very busy working on with our stake—our service providers, homeless providers, United Way. We have been meeting and will continue to meet again in the next month. We hope to come back in January, no later than January, to bring our strategic plan and recommendations to you and to the council.
Great, thank you. And I—not to beat the dead horse, just on the mobile home issue, I—I don't know if you need any additional direction or encouragement from us, but I would like to hear more and learn more about that—the long-term solution for transitioning those properties when they reach the end of their life, but also between now and then, what we're going to do to prevent them from declining into substandard housing that has, you know, health and safety issues that we ultimately might be held responsible for. So is that part of the plan going forward? Is that part of phase two?
Mayor, it will be part of all the data gathering and policy recommendations that we will be asking. Again, we're going to direct questions to each stakeholder, depending kind of where they're at, our neighborhoods, what do you want to see. We will approach Manufactured Housing Association and as well as Manufactured Housing Residents. So we will be asking for their input on that.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions, council?
I just want to second what the mayor said. I think the mobile home issue is huge. is a huge issue, especially out in District Two along Main Street. You know, I think today it's not that bad because of the age restrictions that exist, but I definitely agree with Charles that we're going to have an issue at some point in the future and we should definitely be addressing that today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. We'll look forward to to hearing back from you after phase two is completed. The next item on our agenda is item number three, information pertaining to the current job order contracting projects. Council, any questions regarding those items? Hearing none, item four is acknowledged receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thank you, Mr. Heredia. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is here reports on meetings and conferences attended. Anything you'd like to share with us? Hearing none, Mr. Brady, what is our schedule for future meetings and general information?
Well, first of all, we invite all the council and anyone else to join us today at 10:00 AM for the groundbreaking of our new, and we've got to come up with a different name, but it's the Household Hazardous Waste Facility. I mean, that's what it is, but it sounds kind of toxic. But bring your toxic stuff to us and we'll take care of it. Anyway, we invited everybody to come out for our groundbreaking this morning, just a little bit, at 2412 North Center Street. And then Saturday, the Saturday, December 2nd, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, there'll be a free pancake breakfast and toy drive at Station 210, which is located at 1502 South 24th Street. So we invite everyone to bring unwrapped toys for patients at the Carden Children's Medical Center. Our next council meeting will be December 4th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's probably good to note that the ice rink is now frozen water and it is capable of accommodating ice skaters, so hoping that everyone will take advantage of that as well. Any other questions or concerns? If not, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All in favor, Mr. Freeman will second that. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.